Welcome everybody to this meeting. People here, I wish this place would fill up a little more. We don't have a whole bunch on agenda tonight. We had a workshop Thursday. People here, we said we'd get back at certain hours. One was about the house on South Street. Terry reached out to Joe on that exactly. See what we could legally do right now. I'll let Joe explain what it found out process we have to go through.
So the best route that we're going to take on this one is contact a county attorney. It's Ron Cross, he's a partner of mine as well. He is going to then provide us further advice on what the county's programs are that can help us in solving that problem. That's probably the, it's definitely the most cost efficient. It's probably as well the most time efficient way to handle that project as well. So we don't have any answer yet though, so there's that.
But for immediate resolution on the safety of the property, can we enter, can we go on the property and say at least board up doors and windows? Take it off, post no trespassing signs? Just to keep kids out of there? Because the back part is collapsing. It needs to be condemned. And if we could possibly, really as soon as possible, we should board it up.
Yeah, the safety concern is real, but the person, whoever owns it, be it an individual, a trust, a mortgage company, whoever actually owns it has the right to enjoyment of that property. So we can't make any, they would call that a trespass on their property to make any improvements or any type, any type of change to it at all. So we don't have that right barring until the county deems us able to do so. I don't even know if they would delegate that to us. That would probably be something they would take on themselves to do.
Okay.
And what house are you guys talking about?
Johnson House on South Street.
Right across from the T, like we.
The T back here on the river, the T.
Next to the.
They've held the kids, they held the kids for years.
Right next to the truck.
Another thing we discussed with fire department about the membership. I had a meeting with them last night and they assured me that they've got enough members or they can get enough members to get up to 14, which that's kind of the standard that we set for one to this community. So they've got 30 days to do that. So we're just holding breath and hoping it does because there're not a lot of leadership over there right now. And the issue we've got is the trustees were talking about if things will pick up over there, they're going to back out. And you know, we can't afford it ourselves. We can't afford, the town can't afford to do it by themselves. So that's where we're at on that.
John, did you discuss with them picking a new chief?
Yeah, they got the, I don't know that that's a big issue yet until we see what's going, if they get the membership up. But Richie has stepped in more or less as acting chief now than they have elected him. I said, well, I, well, I have to come before the trustees and the board before you can do an issue like that. They said they would get the paperwork to us. So. Right now they've got eight on the fire department. They need a lot more than that to operate, you know? Does anybody else have anything else in their whole business? That's all I had.
Bruce and I worked on those today. The bait, the new posts have a different whole pattern for the bolts. So we're having, he's going to have to, he's going to have to modify them in the shop before we can set the posts. He's going to work on that and we should have them set by the end of the week.
Anything else?
No.
We have a new bed and a study order. For our capital asset policy that we need to approve. And we're going by the guidelines they give us at $5,000. There are no exceptions to that, so another few exceptions, but they're all outlined on here. So that's number six, 2023. You guys have a chance to look at it?
Yeah. And this was recommended by the state board of counts that.
Correct. And they give us the number of $5,000.
They want us to, they want us to list any, any items over $5,000, but then also recommend that an inventory be taken on smaller stuff.
Yeah, inventory is a recommendation, but it's a good idea.
We should set a bottom number on inventory of the smaller stuff, you know? $200, Martin, you've got a little set, $100, whatever. And have Bruce give an inventory starting. We should do that every year anyway.
And then the only, on land, specified land lots, parcels, and acreage, do we need to get appraisals done to determine that? Or we, can we?
We just do a best guess. They're pretty lenient on those. Because those, we didn't actually pay for. Most of them we got for a dollar over the years or something. There's no value other than what they're being used for.
Well, then, but then for the purposes of this, anything over $5,000, I mean, do we have to list them?
List them, yeah.
We say we paid a dollar.
We list them, but we don't have to have an appraisal.
Okay. Those are all questions I had on it.
I entertain the motion. Go ahead and adopt order 06-2023.
I'll make the motion. I'll second.
Motion been made, second to adopt order 06-2023, the capital asset policy. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same, motion carries. Any other new business? Now that being said, Joy May is asked to speak tonight. Ms. Joy, you've got the floor, your lady.
Thank you.
Sure.
I wanted to start, just to clarify some things with the town marshal. We've had disagreement on how many hours does he work week or month? Because 15 stuck in my mind and I wasn't.
Twenty-four.
Twenty-four, a week?
Twenty-four a week.
A week, okay. And can you?
How much?
Twenty-four hours a week.
Can you tell us, is he paid like just once a month, twice a month? How does that work?
Every two weeks, just like everybody.
Every two weeks, okay. So he was sworn in on the 27th, I think by the notice that we got.
We have to look back on minutes to see exactly.
And he was, I was here for, my husband and I were here for the bill paying meeting and we saw on there a post where he was paid on the 7th of 3/35/88. What was that for? Since he had just been sworn in. For the first week. Has he actually started patrolling? Yes, I haven't seen him, so I didn't know.
He's been doing a lot, George, far as running over to the sheriff's department, make sure that we're up on the CAD system. He's got to get in, I will bet there, and that's why he's using a car a lot now for that. He should be, he's using his personal car. And he's getting his uniforms and stuff like that. But he's, he's reached out to the sheriff's department as far as getting into communication with the CAD system and all that. So a lot of that would, you know, change.
But he has all, everything that he needs as far as jumping in, okay.
He's not patrolling this week. He had a vacation order planned before we hired him. So he is off this week.
Okay. What I actually wanted to discuss was the water rate increase. At 14.4% for minimum users would be $4.57. And I read in the paper where there would be an additional surplus of 15% for people that live outside the town limits. And I understand that the reason is because of the grant money that they say there's not enough funds in the Milton Water Fund. In case we had an emergency, $10,000 possibly to replace a pump or $30,000 to paint the water tower. So they want a cushion in there. The current balance from the paperwork last Thursday stated that we had a water utility operating of $9,634. Water charge on the bill had been increased in last year, last May, 10%. But to avoid an increase in the water rate and still meet the requirements of the grant, here's another suggestion. We've had Best Way collecting our trash since December 14th of 2020 at a charge of currently $11.95 per home. But the town still charges us what we had been charged at $18.92, which is a difference of $6.97 more that we're paying for sanitation than what Best Way is charging. So Terry told me that there were 258 homes that pay for this service. So, and according to the bill pay sheet that I saw last week, we're paying Best Way $2,748.50 a month. I don't know if that's the same every month or if that varies. Is there ever a difference, Terry?
No, very little.
Okay. So the current balance in the trash operating is $13,487. But by my figures, for 258 homes, at $18.92 is $48.81 a month, which over a 30-month period, which is what we've had Best Way, that is 63, almost $64,000. So what else can you tell me comes out of the trash operating expense other than Best Way?
We have some payrolls, some utilities, a small percentage of, just routine bills.
That just seems like a big difference. I know that we pay like when the dumpster gets full, we pay for that. And I knew there was some town employee wage to come out of that. But a solution would be for minimum users, this is what I'm basing this on, for minimum use, which is $4.57 at the 14.4% increase. Take that amount from that $6.97 overage that we're paying into trash and transfer that to the water fund. So that everyone that pays minimum won't have to pay any extra.
I see where you're coming from. That is an excellent idea. We're not far to 14%. I would love for you to stop like that on the 19th when those people are here that's making us do this. We're not going to do this.
I agree too. But I want all of you to know what's, what's under my.
That's an excellent idea. I wish, and I hope that will be able to work. The last thing we wanted to do was raise rates. But you know, I don't think that we can take the chance of losing our $3,100, $3,100,000, you know, over $4. We don't want to take that chance, do we? Or do you? I don't know.
And I understand that they're not just saying, oh, you have to raise rates. What they're wanting is extra money in the water fund. This is an alternate way to put money in the water fund. There'd still be a couple dollars that would still be going extra into sanitation. But that $4.57 for everybody that has a water bill would go into the water fund. Now, I realize there's a lot of us that pay more than minimum, us included. So if there was an average, and I have no idea what that would be, but I did figure for an average $60 water bill, to add 7% would bring that up to, well, $60, $60 water bill times the 14.4% would be $8.64. So if you deduct the $4.57 that you're already transferring into the water, there's another $4.07, which is about 7%. So if you charge those that were over minimum, a 7% increase across the board. Like I said, I don't know what the average bill is for people. I'm just, you know, throwing a different number out there. But that was, that's still less than half of the 14.4% increase. So nobody would be paying much increase at all in your water bill.
We're setting it so with Steve Brock, he's going to put all these numbers together. He would have the answers.
So my question is, how many residents, our households in town right now are delinquent on their water bill?
I can answer that.
Okay.
Well, when I was on council, there was quite a few. So, and they still have running water or had one running water. So we're increasing water bills or potentially increasing by four point? They can't pay their payment now. So how are they going to afford a 14.4% increase? And if we're following ordinance, this water should be shut off over a certain amount and reconnect these and all this. And I know somebody next door to me that turns their water horn off themselves.
What you were just talking about, isn't that in the ordinance?
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, there's penalties for being late, for disconnect, the rehook, needing to turn back on. I mean, when I was on there, I asked Terry one time, I got a list of 17 homeowners or houses that were delinquent, and some of them were over $1,000 delinquent. So I work at a bank. So if you're six months, average six months behind, we repo your vehicle or repo your house.
I think my car would be gone.
Right. So why do they still have running water? I mean, I know there's kids involved, but they still have running water. These residents do.
There's notices going out every week, they're being shut off. They're using the lean process a lot.
But do you, do we charge a disconnect fee, a reconnect fee?
Yeah.
And late fees for everybody?
We charge fees for when the lean goes on. They're being charged.
But are they getting their water shut off?
Some are, some aren't. Some will set up a plan to get it paid, but if they don't, then it goes to lean.
But the lean gets put on, but is the water going to shut off?
A lot of, she shut off three yesterday. So that's happened every week.
Because what works for one works for everybody in town.
Exactly.
I don't care if you're, my next door neighbor or who, if your water, if his water be shut off because he's delinquent, that means everybody in town who's delinquent, not paying their water bill, should get theirs shut off. What works for one person in town works for everybody. I don't care who you are, where you're at, in what position you're in. What works for one works for all.
I agree. But when you say delinquent, do you talk, are you talking about if they're on a payment plan to try to get caught back up, they're still delinquent?
Right, we have payment plans at work, but when you miss that one payment plan, you're done.
But I, I feel like if they're making an effort.
Right, if they make the effort, but once they miss that one effort, then you're done. I mean, if we, if we have that many people that can't afford it now, how are they going to afford a 14.4% increase?
That's a concern.
But I mean, that's a big concern. I mean, I, so I get, I'm just, I get one household, I get minimum, minimum everything is minimum for me, it's always $97 a month. We're higher than most places around here. And I use like 1,200 gallons tops a month. And mine's at $97, $96 and some odd cents. So I can imagine what a household is.
Mine's $135, that's four.
Right.
That's what mine is. Four hundred, five hundred. And my daughter's is like 200.
But like I said in the one meeting, I'd rather pay the increase than have to come up with $10,000 or $30,000 to repair a damaged thing. But I do agree that if we have delinquents, regardless if they're on a payment plan or not, if they're delinquent, they're delinquent, shut them off.
I mean, we always give everybody a chance. I mean, there's, there's certain things that come up in life that could affect people. I mean, even at my bank, we give them a chance and work with them. But there's a coming time when they're not willing to work with you anymore. There comes a time, everybody has problems and things come up in people's lives.
And I agree with that 100%. What's happened to us, I agree. But we've got to figure out a way to all get along so that we can get this grant so that we can have clean water and have everything that we need. We just have to figure it out. Wherever the money comes from is where we got to figure it out from. But we have to take care of our citizens, period.
I agree with a lot of Joy's questions when they're here. I'm not paying.
Yeah, I'd love for you to present that to them because we don't want to raise rates, but that's, I don't want to lose $3 million either, you know? But if it comes to that, eventually, you know as well as I do, that these old special east side of town, a lot of those lines were put in at the 60s or galvanized, and they probably ought to lead connections back then, I'm sure they do. Eventually, the federal government's going to come in and say, you're going to have to take them out. Well, then that puts Milton in a big mind. If we don't got the money, we're going to have to borrow their money. Then the residents is going to pay it back that way. You know, you think your water bill is going up now, what if they come in and say that? You know? I just, we're in a, we're in a bad situation. I don't, I really don't know which way to turn. But if there's, if there's a way where any of this doesn't come back and residents of town, I'm all for it. I am all for it. But like you said, nobody has voted yet to raise the water, but that's in the, that's in the picture, you know? That's something we might have to do, we don't know. But if your idea works, you know, the man with the plan, that the big money man will be here the 19th and I wish you would present it to him that way. Exactly like you did to us and maybe it'll work, I don't know. But I would sleep at night anytime it re-rains anything in your town. Because we've got a lot of senior citizens in town, you know? That $4 could mean a bill, that $4 could mean a medicine, you know? And I worry about that. You guys might not think so, but we do, we all worry about it.
Can we, if we collect money into trash fund, we can't move that to water?
No, we can change the rate where it goes there instead. Raise the rate.
Well, we could lower the trash rate.
And raise the water rate.
And raise the water rate.
Where it offsets, you know? We've done that before.
We couldn't just collect money in trash fund and transfer it to water?
Just can't transfer it, no.
That's what you were suggesting doing. I don't think we can do it.
No, there would need to be an amendment or something to the ordinance on how it's transferred.
Good idea.
That is a good idea. I'm glad you brought it up. That's something we can look at because it's been, like I said, it's been bothering all of us to raise any rate. We've gotten trouble for not raising rates, that's probably right now. Do you have anything else, Joy? Thank you for coming and you know, the thought of that, that's great. You know, at least it's brighter than we did when we first sat down here about the rate increases. But to a man up here that nobody wants it, I thought it was kind of backwards anyway after they tell you to have the money, then come back say you're going to have to do this or they have to get the money. That's, that's not right. You know, just like, strike under the back of a car and say, well, if it's not red, you can't get it. That's, that's not right.
Well, I understand that the same thing happened when the sewer was done.
Yeah.
Which, I, I wasn't here when that happened, so I wasn't aware. So this kind of took me by surprise that the, you know, the, the amount of the money in our water fund affected whether or not we could possibly lose the grant. So it kind of took me by surprise. But apparently it happened before with the sewer, same thing happened.
They didn't give us a choice before they told us to have it.
What's that?
They didn't give us a choice before they just told us to do it.
Right.
Well, Joy, done nothing else on that. Anybody have anything on the board, Cedric? Anything? You have anything, Terry?
No.
I got a permit to the, for a room addition on West Connersville. Contractors meeting me tomorrow morning on that at the job. We're going to take a look. I don't know the whole scope of it, so we're going to go over. He said he has a drawing, which is good. And then the only other thing was I talked to a gentleman named Steve at Hayes Arboretum. He's going to come out on Friday morning and just take a look at those two big sycamores we have over by the school. And he said he can make a recommendation. They don't do a core, he doesn't do like a core sample, but he can, he can look at them and give us a recommendation on whether we should proceed with, you know, getting a core sample or I think they can even do an ultrasound to make sure they're not dead inside. And it came up because we had a pretty good sized branch fall off of the one in the wintertime, we had that storm. And it fell right on the sidewalk on, on one. And it was big enough, it would have hurt somebody if it had fallen on them, so. The other issue I brought up with him was the fact that there used to be, the school there would protect those trees from western wind. And he actually said that that does play a factor. If a tree grows up with wind protection, its root system is different than if all of a sudden that protection's not there. So he's going to take a look at that and make a recommendation on whether we should do something with the trees.
Will you be able to report on that on the next meeting?
Yeah.
I think that's all I had.
What time are they coming Friday?
8:30 in the morning.
Now, to an end, entertain the motion to approve the minutes for May 9th, May 25th, and executive session. That was on May 26th. Got sure I have copies of those.
So we have minutes from May 9th, May 25th, May 26th, correct?
Correct.
I'll make a motion to approve the minutes for those dates.
I'll second it.
Motion been made and second to approve the minutes for May 9th, May 25th, and executive session for May 26th. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same?
Same as the motion on the, on the 9th, if I wasn't here.
Okay. And we have a time to motion to approve both claims.
Looks like the largest ticket item we had was $1,302 for Core and Main Sewage. What was that for, Terry? It says two inch.
Attached to that vouchers this Thursday. I didn't get any. Four float switches. We got the Core item now.
Of the what?
Four float switches I checked off and have them.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. Had them on, I bought, back and showed those folks. Anyone know about who Core and Main were?
Well, no, there's a second one on here for Core and Main that says float switches. Was this also, was that also, was that additional? Because that one's $315, says float switches.
Yeah, because he's had problems with both of them. He replaced all of them on one and maybe just one on the other, something like that. Something like that.
I didn't have any other questions on account.
No reason I remember that one. Maybe I remember that. Miss May asked me to call them at work, and I showed them the thing I am for selling, that sewer product. So the name of the motion to approve the minutes, pay the claims.
I'll move that we pay the claims. I'll second.
What you've been made in second to pay all the claims. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same? Okay, going around the table. Only thing I've got is the nineteenth. I hope you go to your neighbors and get, let's try to get this place full. Because the people are, that's all the whole process we went through getting the grant and come back and told us, we've got to do this, we've got to do that. They're going to be here to explain everything to us, and I want all you guys to be here on the nineteenth at six o'clock if you would. The more people we got, better, better off we'll know what's going on. Because I have no idea how they come back with what they did. Maybe they'll explain after us in a way that we can understand it a little better.
Who is going to be attending that meeting?
You know?
It's open to thousands.
No, but...
Steve Brock will be here. Mike Klein Peter will be here. Because there's Oker hearing at the same time.
Is anybody from RQAW going to be here?
I don't, don't know.
But that's who I have questions.
There's a white boy said he would be here. That's what he told us.
Who?
The boy sitting there, he would be here. When we were meeting last time, you and I?
Aaron.
Okay, Aaron will be here.
Aaron said he'd be here. I asked him about that. I talked to Rob about it.
So Aaron with RQAW will be here.
Right. Supposed to be.
Steve Brock will be here. And Klein Peter. And is, how about a representative from the company, the only company we got a bid from?
Probably not.
Can we request, or is it too late to request that they send somebody?
It's never too late to request. It's only if they will. We can request it.
Well, I think we could reach out to them and just see if they could have somebody present.
Yeah, I'm not here. I just got, you know, a problem with the scope of what was the bid and what to be to come back at. I just don't know where. There was a mix up at the border. What, two hundred and eighty dollars from the time it went out, time we got it back. Did we know ball that much or what? I don't know where the problem was.
It just caught everybody off guard. It's just too high.
Yeah.
Based on the same project a year ago, in a different town. So you know, there's going to be some difference, but not, it's just caught everybody off guard.
But my understanding is they've come to some kind of agreement to doing what work we've got, doing the work for what the money we've got. But my worry about it, if you, if we're cutting back some, well, the government takes some of the money back. That's, you know, I don't know. They could say yes, they could say no. That's my worry right now. But maybe we'll get some answers to the nineteenth, like everybody else will all know with better what's going on this year. Hold for it. Anybody got any questions out there we can ask them?
How do we find out what alleys have been vacated and if there's an easement on our property? Or if there's an easement?
Terry, I'm going to...
I've got a record we've vacated the past several years. And there may be some before that, so. You don't want any particular.
Yeah. And then across from me, from the property lane, when I look on GIS, it looks like there's an easement, because my road is only like a one lane. And I've always told, was told that part of the other yard to that post was easement for the two lane and part of my yard too. And there's some...
That's the whole, my, I might have...
discrepancy and I'm having issues with my neighbors.
I don't know what.
Um, because I had the girls, that's like seven or eight years old, out there yelling at me the other day.
Down on the south side of you?
West.
West.
And then where am I? When I look on GIS, where the yellow line is, it goes to that cement post across the street from me all the way down. And it's also, my yard is actually goes down my little dip where my line really is. So I, I've been always been told that's where the key bit, so few people can pass on that road. Man, so it's really like, I would say town property, you know what I mean? But like, it's my responsibility, part of my yard, so I mow.
Like part of the street right away. Somebody's in the street.
Right.
Does it need to be surveyed, is it, or?
No, but like, so we park across the street sometimes and there's been they, like, the girl, the daughter, little kid was yelling to get off of her property.
See that? What's the street?
What's being described, I'm not. It looks like it goes into Sherry. Is it on the other side of Sherry Street? South Sherry Street, is that where?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. So your guys' properties don't touch, so they're not contiguous like that?
No, but, so there's a cement post, you can see there in the GIS. So that's where the yellow line runs across all the way up and down. Well, we park sometimes along that street right there. And so there's the seven-year-old daughter's yelling at us to move our vehicle because we were parking in their yard.
Send the seven-year-old down to you?
Exactly. And then is the alley behind them, is it vacated?
No. It's electric.
Yeah.
Because they block it. They park in that alley every day.
Yeah.
So my, my, my response to the little girl was, when your dad can keep his trash and stuff out of my yard, I'll move my truck.
I just tell him, talk to the marshal. He'll take care of it.
But I haven't seen the new marshal.
Terry, you tell him about it. He can take care of it.
That's why I told the daughter, I said, you tell your dad to keep his trash out of my yard. And if he has any other problems with it, come see me.
Goes everywhere.
I wouldn't involve the seven-year-old. I'd say, I'm going to talk to your parents. I'd leave the seven-year-old out of it.
Because, I mean, he, I mean, like, there's been, there's been issues.
Yeah.
Lately, a lot more issues.
Well, we can't, we can't get it off the issues, we're in the number.
No, I mean, but it is, because the town needs to go about ordinance, one thing for the trash, the vegetation, parking in an alley, those are violations.
That's the street right away with down there.
Forty feet anywhere.
Everywhere?
Everywhere, yeah, at least forty.
I mean, so that, so that makes it a town issue.
And your question is about the alley.
Right. So he parks in the alley every day.
So you wanted to know if it was vacated.
Right, and it's not.
If someone's parking in an alley, that's a public right of way. If it's not vacated and they're parking there...
That's fine.
Then we could, you could call the sheriff's department and...
No, if it's not vacated, he's not allowed to park in the alley.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Right. So then he's blocking a public right of way, is what you're saying. So you could call the sheriff's department, and if the new town marshal's on duty, you can send him over.
I mean, I pick up trash bags and trash in my yard.
It's been going on for years, hasn't it?
Yeah, but the town won't do nothing about it.
Well, has it been reported? I mean, I mean, at the time, when the, when the incident first...
I've been here multiple...
You got to call the sheriff's department and report it.
I, I've came to council reporting it.
They have to catch, the town marshal will have to go there.
I'm talking about trash and vegetation and weeds. I've came multiple times to council and said, I want the first letter go out. I want the second letter go out. I want the third letter go out. I want a fourth letter go out. Never got sent.
So it's not trash, like they're throwing garbage out there and then it goes away?
Exactly. No, it is. It's, I pick up milk jugs, I pick up paper plates, I pick up sarfeon cups, wrappers from everything, handbag wrappers. You name it. I, I picked up a dumpster full of trash. Dumpster and a half of trash out of my yard in like two weeks' period.
I think we could, does that happen like on trash day or something?
No. Go drive up there, there's so much trash is in the, is in the out, is in the gutter.
That's why I stopped him during that.
Tom, take a look at that, and then he gets back.
It was good for about a year because he didn't live back.
Pretty clean for a while.
I mean, I know I can't pick up his leaves, but it'll cost money to pick up trash.
We'll have Tom take a look at that when he gets back.
And that's what's, that, that, that thing full is trash.
How about Bruce cleaned that out?
See, it's first, it's, that's where it started. He was a man. He said, are you different?
Exactly. Drives his corner, so he drives that, drives to corners. Personally used.
Anybody outside, you may forward? And entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I'll second it.
Okay, may you say to the jury, all in your favor, say aye.
Aye.
We're the jury, folks.